When do you tell me all the time? The guy caught you before me.
No, yeah.
Council President, we're ready.
Okay, thank you. Township of Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, May the 10th, 2011. The time is 7:31. Meeting called to order by President Fox at 7:00 PM. Please all join me and rise for the flags of the... Vinnie?
I flag the flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Can I call the roll?
Yes, roll call, please.
Mr. Cesaro.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Ferrera.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Council President Fox.
Here.
Others President, Jasmine Lynn, our Business Administrator, John Iglesino, our Township Attorney, Judy Silver, our Township Clerk, and our illustrious Mayor, Jamie Barbario. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting of May the 17th, 2011. Formal action, Mayor, may not be taken. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notes on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December the 15th, 2010, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record and the Star Ledger and was forwarded by fax to weather local newspapers and local radio stations on December the 16th, 2010. Please note, council meetings are videotaped, they are aired on Cablevision, public access channel 21, at 2:00 PM on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net. We have a second reading scheduled for the several resolutions or ordinances for the 17th, and the one is the license agreement with the Precipity Soccer Club, Inc., Reynolds Avenue Field, 2011 colon 4. And the second is providing for retirement payouts and authorize on a special emergency appropriation of $895,944, therefore, 2011 colon 5. Calendar year, 2011, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appreciation limits and to establish a cap bank, and that's 2011 colon 6.
Council President, just for the public's information, ordinance 2011 colon 05 and 2011 colon 06 will be addressed at the special meeting, which is at 7 o'clock, and the other ordinance will be at the regular meeting. It will be one following the other.
Discussion reminder, scheduled meetings, 5:17 at 7:00 PM. Special meeting, budget hearing, adoption, public invited, public participation. On May the 17th, at 7:30 PM, the regular meeting, the public's invited, public participation. 6:14 at 7:30, I'm sorry, June the 14th, 2011, at 7:30 PM, agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. Minutes for approval? Who's that? Minutes for approval. Agenda meeting of 4:511, absent Fox and DePiero. Regular meeting of 4:1211.
Counsel, I'll put these on for approval at the regular meeting.
Yes, please. John.
Sure. When we get to it. Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Appointments to Township Committee and Boards. We have a zoning board of adjustment, alternate number one, member to fill vacancy, term expires 12/31/12. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Steve Capadona.
Second.
Can you dispel that last name for me, please? And I'm sorry, who is the second by?
Vinnie. A roll call, please.
Are you going, Council President, ask if there are any additional nominations before we do that, or do you want to send that vote?
Are there any additional nominations? Hearing none.
Okay, I'll call the roll on the nomination of Steve Capadona to be the alternate number one member to fill the vacancy at the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Cesaro.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
No.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Council President Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton, do you have information on this gentleman so that I can advise him?
I could get it for you.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, as Council President, I get to appoint the Council Liaison to a couple of positions. Number one is the Emergency Services Committee, and that's to deal with our first aid squads and fire departments, and I'm appointing John Cesaro to that position. The second position is the Council Liaison to the Board of Education, term expiring 12/31/11, and for that position, I'm placing Councilman Stanton in.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
And Counsel, I will advise those boards who are the new Council Liaisons will formally be.
Resolution, Judy?
Yes, this is a resolution we do every year pursuant to statute. We just certify the individuals, ambulance and the ambulance equipment, the volunteer first aid squads, and rescue recovery as being qualified by the information they provide to us and to the state. So I'll have that resolution on, it's a routine yearly resolution. I'll have it on for the regular meeting.
Okay, Mayor?
I will have something for the next agenda, though.
Okay. Administration, Jasmine?
For the bids taken, we're recommending award of the, for the replacement bleachers to the low bidder, and that's Ben Schaefer from Lake Kaputcon. Park Road resurfacing, Phase 1, we're recommending award to low bidder, top line construction from Somerville. The bid was under the engineer's estimate for the Simpson Avenue reconstruction in Mount Tabor. We're recommending award to J.A. Alexander from Bloomfield, New Jersey. This bid was $80,000 under the engineer's estimate.
Okay.
Under quotations, the sewer incinerator, we're getting very close, I think we're going to try to bring this to the Council this month. For the risk manager, we're going to table that. For the professional services for the solar installation at the community center, we're requesting that Council award that contract tonight. This is a project that's funded through the Energy Efficiency Block Grant through the federal government, the stimulus money, and I'd like to get it underway as soon as possible, so I'm asking that you award it to Perret Samgen Architects from Rockaway, New Jersey.
Counsel members, you have a copy of that resolution with your packet. If someone would like to read that, that would be appropriate. Just gonna...
Are you done, Jasmine?
Yes.
Well, we're gonna do that resolution right now, so is Mr. Ferrera gonna move the resolution? Then he could read it at this point.
Whereas the Township of Precipity Troy Hills is eligible to receive federal funds available through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires certain certification to be submitted along with as part of the consolidated plan to submission, and whereas pursuant to the government regulation of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, as prepared the requirement submission to apply for community development block grant funds to the fiscal year 2011, now therefore be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills and the County of Morris County, State of New Jersey, being the governing body thereof as follows. The Mayor of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills is hereby authorized to submit the application to the community development funding, including all understandings and assurance contained therein to utilize to the fullest extent of the funding allowed and determined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amending to act as to the authorized representative of the Township or cemetery hills and to provide such additional information as it may be required. The Mayor and other appropriate and responsible official are hereby authorized and directed to execute on behalf of the Township such certification or certifications as may be required under the rules and regulation of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
You know, you read a resolution that was coming down later, but if the Council wants to do that one now, that was another resolution we wanted to read this evening. That had to do with the CDVG funds. So if it's appropriate with the Council, since it's already been read, we can vote on that one first? Are you following me?
All right, do I have a second? I'll second.
Okay, so this is for the resolution that appears a little bit later in your agenda. It's authorizing some middle of application for community development block grant funds for the fiscal year 2011. Since Mr. Ferrera read it, and we have a motion and a second, I'll call the roll on that resolution. Mr. Cesaro.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Council President Fox.
Yes.
And now, if you want to go to the one that's the proposal for the professional services.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, awarding a contract for professional services for installation of a 30K wide room mounted solar panel array for the community center tennis facilities. Whereas the Township of Precipity Troy Hill has need to acquire professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of P.A.L. 204 at 19 New Jersey S.A. 19, semi-colon, 448, 20, period, 5, at SAC, end. Whereas the Township advertised for a request for proposal from parties interested in providing professional service for installation of a 30KW roof mounted solar panel array for the community center tennis facility as... Whereas the Business Administrator and Director of Purchasing for the Township have reviewed the proposal received and recommended that the contract be awarded to the Perret Samin Architect, 439 Route 46 East, Rockaway, New Jersey, 07866, for a lump sum price for Phase 1 of 8,500, a lump sum price for the Phase 2 of 11,800, a lump sum price of the Phase 3 of 3,200, or is it 3 million? I can't see, I'm sorry. And a lump sum price of Phase 4 for 3,200, is it? Or 3,000, I'm sorry. Whereas the Chief Financial Officer of the Township of Precipity Troy Hill has certified the availability of funds in the following 2009 Energy Conservating Block Grant, now therefore be resolved as follows. The Township Council of Precipity Troy Hills authorized the Mayor to enter into an agreement with the Perret Samin Architect, 439 Route 46 East, Rockaway, New Jersey, 07866, end. This contract shall be awarded pursuant to the fair and open process in accordance with the NJS A 19, colon, 448, dash, 25, at SAC, and as a professional service pursuant to NJS 40, dash, A, is it, 1, dash, 1, 5, 1, A.
Just need a second for that. I'm sorry, who seconded that? Council President Fox did?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll call the roll, Council President. Mr. Cesaro.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Council President Fox.
Yes.
For the fireworks, we're recommending award to the only bidder, which is international, who has provided the fireworks display for us for the last, I don't know how many years, many years.
We'll have it on for the regular meeting, Counsel.
What's the cost?
Do they stay competitive, Jasmine?
Yes, what we do is, we, it's almost a reverse bid. We say for $20,000, what will you give us?
Gotcha.
And so they tell us how many fireworks they're going to give us in different categories.
We're gonna get a lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Better than last year.
Good, good answer.
All right, you're done, Jasmine?
All of the other resolutions are in place. We have one other resolution that we were asking that the Council approve tonight, and it's for, it's to authorize an application to the Local Finance Board relating to a solar project at the main library that's going to be funded through the Morris County Improvement Authority.
And Council Member Stanton, are you gonna read that?
Yes.
You're gonna read it by title?
It's gonna be read and by title only. Copies are available for the public upfront. Resolution Series 2011, Local Unit Participating in the Morris County Improvement Authority Series 2011 Renewable Energy Program, authorizing such authority to apply to the Local Finance Board for necessary consents and approvals on behalf of such participant, all in connection with the authority's County of Morris Guaranteed Renewable Energy Program lease revenue bond Series 2011, federally taxable in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $60 million and a participant project financed thereby.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Council President, may I call the roll?
Please.
Mr. Cesaro.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Council President Fox.
Yes.
Thank you.
Under the ordinances, we're tabling the first one, which is the occupancy of residential units, and the other two are ready to go.
Counsel, I can put those on.
That's for the next week? Yes, please.
Yes.
Why'd we table, Jasmine?
Who's tabled?
We're not prepared. We wanted to make it a more all-encompassing ordinance change, and we haven't prepared the revised ordinance yet.
Okay.
May I, Council President?
Yes, please, John.
Can I read the engineering report? For May 2011. Nick? Ma'am? Thank you. No, no problem. Status of road resurfacing, putting stone area? No change. Revisions to escrow requirements in connection with residential sidewalk driveway repairs? No change. Troy Brook through the Hills of Troy? Change. 711 Park Road, Fairview Estates? No change. Edgefield Drive, no parking zone, upper? No change. Canterbury Estates, Vacation of Lots, 26 and 77 and Block 98? No change. New flood, new road flood mitigation? No change. Train horns at intersections, quiet zones? There's Mr. Simpson, how are ya? The result of the diagnostic team meeting from June 2009 showed that the only acceptable method of implementing a quiet zone at the Powdermill Road grade crossing would be if the rail crossing was upgraded to include four quadrant gates as well as other ancillary warning devices. The cost for the quad gates is over $700,000, not including improvements to the dam, power out warning devices, and a 20-year maintenance obligation. The engineering office was investigating an option whereby wayside horns are installed to alert motorists of approaching trains. The wayside horn demonstration was held on April 5th, and the report on the findings will be released shortly. Collapsing retaining walls, 1 and 3 Eldridge Road, Block 89, lots 13.2 and 13.1? No change. And extension of major soil moving permit in developers' agreement, Morris Corporate Center, 5 and 6, Block 136, lots 43.03, 44 and 76. No changes are proposed as part of this extension. Therefore, the engineering office has no objection to the Township Council granting the extension until December 31st, 2015 by resolution.
I have those resolutions ready to go. If the Council would like me to put them off for this Tuesday's meeting.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I think we got a little out of order, Judy. I lost track.
We're on Chief Financial Officer.
All right.
And there's just two, there's one resolution authorizing cancellations of grant fund receivable and reserve balances that is recommended by our Chief Financial Officer. I can put that on for Tuesday night.
Yes, please.
The second item there is the bond ordinances for the capital improvements for the current capital water sewer in Golf. This is based on the budget items. I can put this on for introduction.
Thank you. Counselor?
Yes, complies with, Council President. First, there is a resolution authorizing an agreement and release with DLS Contracting, Inc. As you may recall from the last meeting, this is the contractor who performed work up at the Knoll. There was a dispute with regards to sums that were owed to the contractor. They were claiming approximately additional $27,000 owed to them, which included $4,300 in change in retainage. There have been several discussions between the administration and DLS, and there is a settlement proposal that would offer final payment of $12,000 to DLS, which would include the retainage, so that the actual out-of-pocket for the town would be $7,654.55. In exchange for that, the township would obtain a full release of all claims from DLS.
Counsel, can I put that on for Tuesday night's meeting? Thank you.
Please.
Next, there was correspondence that I just wanted to make you all aware of concerning Brookside Senior Citizens Housing Corp. As you may recall, there was discussions about extending the tax exemption that that facility currently has and has had for some time. Instead of paying property taxes, they make a payment in lieu of taxes to the municipality. We've been in discussions for several months with Mr. Alan Rich, who is the attorney for Brookside, and frankly, we had reached on the administration level an agreement that had considerable appeal, both to the Township and to Brookside. Unfortunately, the law doesn't really allow us to consummate that agreement, and so we've really been forced to suspend all further negotiations on it. And very briefly, the law is, is that only in certain circumstances does a municipality have statutory authority to let one property taxpayer, you know, not pay taxes. Either you're in a redevelopment area, or in the case of senior citizen housing, if there is financing coming through the New Jersey Housing Mortgage and Finance Agency. And there is a loan, and has been a loan since the early 1980s, to Brookside that was through that institution. They intend on paying that mortgage off, and once that mortgage is satisfied under statute, there is no basis to treat Brookside differently from other property owners, and so the law just doesn't permit us to consummate the agreement that we'd hoped to consummate. If they do go back for financing through the HMFA, then there would be a vehicle to take those discussions up again. But that's what happened there. And I have two items for closed session. One is settlement discussions with CBS Company. That is the subject of an ongoing litigation for quite some time between the Township and CBS. And the other item for closed session is to discuss the potential for waiver of attorney-client privilege as it relates to the pending Mossberg action investigation and criminal trial involving the U.S. Attorney's Office.
And we'll do that at the end of the meeting, Counsel.
Yes, thank you. Township offices and committee, no agenda items, communications, correspondence, Mount Tabor Fire Department, District 1, requesting the establishment of fire zones and the regulation of parking at Endicam Brothers Plaza, Route 53, 976 Tabor Road, Block 27, Lot 11, dot, 2, 1.
Mr. Council President? If I may, just with regard to the waiver attorney-client privilege, because there is some time sensitivity to it, after closed session, the Council may want to consider passing a resolution waiving attorney-client privilege as it relates to matters concerning Mr. Mossberg. Wanted to make the public aware of that, that there is the possibility of some action by the Council after the closed session in that regard.
Thank you, John. Judy, make sure we do that, please. We have resolutions from Randolph, Necon, and Booton, supporting the Oprah's original intent.
I was just wondering, excuse me, before you do that, the Mount Tabor Fire Department's request, I have put that into an ordinance form, we can have that introduced on Tuesday.
Randolph, Necon, Booton, supporting Oprah's original intent. We've done that already, so...
Yes, we've already supported that.
And Judy, applications, licenses?
They're in order, I can have them on for Tuesday night.
That's great.
Now the public hearing, then...
All right, I now open the council meeting to the public. Anybody wishing to address us, please approach the microphone, sign in, and state your name.
Hi, Julia Peterson, 25, old Precipity Road. Councilman and Mayor Barbaro, hi.
Good evening.
In the interest of being very positive, I want to tell you how wonderful I think the staff at Town Hall is. Every time you come in for anything, and even paying, even on tax week, they're really cheerful, polite, and humorous, and I think that's great. So kudos to them. Actually, I'm here to speak about something really curious that happened here in this room in October, and I wasn't here, so I'm speaking from what I've read. I saw the council agenda, and I thought this was a really strange thing, and at that time, I didn't investigate. But it turns out it was a really strange thing, okay? The town attorney brought a request for a property at 272 Precipity Road to be declared in need of rehabilitation, and it was a declaration for the planning, the planning board had to investigate. And then that sets in process a special zone for that one acre lot, okay? The name of the owner or the person requesting it isn't publicly available. I haven't been able to find it. Then in January, after the investigation, this council passed an ordinance declaring the property in need of rehabilitation. I assume at the advice of your experts. The planning board began debating this at their last meeting, and will be voting on Monday about a suitable project. What's really curious to me about this process is it's unprecedented in this town. Usually zone changes affect more than one property. They're proposed after study and reflection. Allowing a property owner to request a designation like that will open the door to many requests. And believe me, I know because I live in the area where those requests will be coming in. No residents from the area were sent notice of the change because the radius is a 200-foot radius. There happened to not be any residences within that 200-foot radius. So the residences were pretty surprised, and it's really the residents of this neighborhood that have the most at stake from this change. Precipity Road's one of the busiest roads in town, I'm sure you all know that. It parallels 287, so anytime there's an accident on 287 or congestion, all the trucks, everything come over to Precipity Road. Even though we have wonderful, what I call, Precipity Intersections in some places, and that's an eight-lane intersection feeding into a two-lane road, it really doesn't help much, and the traffic is really horrible. So any plan that adds more traffic to Precipity Road really needs to be carefully considered. I would hope that the Council would speak out to defend the rights of the people who live in these neighborhoods. They're really your constituents. The proposal for this property, as you probably know, is to build 50 condominiums on a one-acre lot, plus a bank. That would be, I think, four banks in that stretch of Precipity Road. So this is a way to promote, being promoted to improve the neighborhood, okay? The mature trees that screen colonial heights will be cut down, leaving those people who live in those apartments with no buffer. A six-story building will be visible from 12-foot in Lake Precipity. It's gonna be sticking up, because we went and took pictures, you can see where the trees are. Building's gonna be above the trees. I don't know how people will like that. Also changes the view for a lot of people on that hill in Lake Precipity and the Green Hills people. In the planning board meetings, they don't allow us to ask this question, but I want to ask you. Would you like it if someone built a six-story building next to your house? Is that the view you want from your deck? Okay, now I got away with asking that question here, and it makes me happy. And the other thing I want to speak to you about is the Daily Record and the Star Ledger are really kind of moribund as far as local news coverage. I'm sure you all know that. Wouldn't it make more sense if, when there's a zone change coming up, the people proposing the change had to put a sign on the property? That way, people driving by would see the sign. I think it's a good idea. Maybe this body would prefer to keep the changes under wraps until it's too late for citizens to express an opinion. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just in terms of the process, Ms. Patterson, first of all, my recollection is, is that this property has not been declared in need of redevelopment, it's been declared in need of rehabilitation, which is a very significant difference under the law. The property owner did not request that that specific...
Where did the request come from, then?
What occurred was, and what typically occurs, is that a property owner will engage a town in discussion about the prospect of a project. And I suggested that an appropriate mechanism in this instance would be to utilize the redevelopment...
redevelopment law as a mechanism for the redevelopment of this property. The plan and whether or not there's a project, what the project looks like, obviously, is a policy decision. That's certainly not up to me. But in terms of the process to be utilized, I felt that the redevelopment process, particularly the area in need of rehabilitation aspect of the redevelopment law, was particularly well-suited for this particular area. And the township planner, Mr. Ed Snikes, concurred wholeheartedly. It is a process that is commonly used throughout the state of New Jersey. And so that's actually where that came from.
Okay. Well, I think I got that idea, but it is very strange to rezone one acre lot in the middle of a whole neighborhood. I don't, I can't recall it ever being done here before. And it is something that I really am sure, with the, given the number of empty buildings that exist in that Percipony Road area, and given the fact that it's fairly common knowledge that there's somewhat of an agenda to redevelop Percipony Road. If that's going to happen, I really think that the council needs to consider talking to the people that live there. That was just my point.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the public's information, okay? The six stories is proposed by a developer. That has not been approved by the planning board yet.
And if I may, Council President.
Yes.
If you're interested in hearing more about it, you can come Monday night, May 16th, because what you're seeing here and the flyer, it's not what the building is going to look like. And I think if you come, you take a look at what's being presented, you may, you'll be better educated. Because that whole corridor, and I'll get into that Monday night, certain individuals, they sold properties off in the past in '80, '84 to developers, and that's really started changing the corridor at Percipony Road. So, you know, on Monday night, when you come, I'll even give them to more detail.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Simpson?
Okay, start.
Go ahead.
Timer. I want to give you an update on the.
Mr. Simpson, Mr. Simpson, you need to give Mr. the.
Oh, Robert Simpson.
Thank you.
30 Hillsinger Road, Mount Tabor.
Thank you.
I always forget that.
I know.
I said last. I spoke to Mr. George Winters about two weeks ago and asked him for the report, copy of the report on the wayside horns, and he didn't have it ready. But I kind of told him, you know, I'd like to get a copy as soon as possible, and he did have it ready last Tuesday. And I asked for a copy. He says, well, he gave it to Justin, and Justin had to sign it. And I spoke to Justin, and he said, well, he had to review everything, and maybe he would have it ready next week, or maybe next month. I know stuff moves slow around here, but I'll keep coming back. Anyway, I did get a, I have a copy of the report from Michelle from the Health Department. She did the sound test, and I wanted to make sure that when the report from Mr. Winters comes in, that these figures will be on there. To let you know what it is, the, she took some readings at the residence on Powdermill Road. That's the first house on Powdermill Road away from the crossing, and this is with the wayside horns. And she got a reading of 88 decibels. And she got a reading of a train horn from this same position, and the train horn was 90 to 92 decibels. A lot of the trains, some of the horns are really loud, some are soft, so, not soft, but not as loud. But they're all bad. They block out everything. And then she also went to my house at 30 Hillsinger, and she got, she took a couple readings with the trains, because like I say, some of the trains, the horns are very loud. And one train was 71 decibels at my house, and another one was 87 decibels at my house. And the wayside horn at my house was 65 decibels. That's the latest update on the, this way you can read the updates when, when that's, these people, you don't get them right away.
When this report's complete for Mr. Lisa, I'll make sure each council member gets a copy as well. And, Mr. Simpson, I didn't know you were reaching out to Mr. Lisa. I mean, to George. Just call my office, because even I called today to see where the report was, and I'll get that report to you.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be nice, yeah. Yeah, because I, how long does it take to review this, you know? Instead of a week or a month? It would be nice to get this moving.
I will.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson.
It's been years.
Thanks, Mr. Simpson.
That's the, from Michelle.
Thank you.
And my bald head does not look good on.
Hi. My name is Robert Peterson. I live at 25 Old Percipony Road. I'm here tonight to address a proposal for 272 Percipony Road that is currently being considered by the planning board, at the direction of this council, I understand. When I moved to Percipony in 2004, it was my first experience living in a suburban setting. I was born and brought up in Brooklyn and raised my family in Rochester, New York. My experiences in Percipony have been pleasant ones. Friendly people, convenient services, less density, even in this highly developed area. Easy access to major urban settings, and an absence of high-rise buildings. I can understand why people might want to move to Percipony, and I am aware that the township is mostly built out. This places pressure on planners and politicians who see development as an opportunity to make money, either for themselves or for the town government. Obviously, one way to address a lack of available land to spread out in is to build up the, if you can't make them wider, make them taller theory of development. I'm here tonight to plead with you to reject this, this theory, excuse me, and to encourage you to maintain the low-rise character of Percipony. One of the things that makes Percipony special is the absence of high-rise buildings. Problems associated with this type of development include increased population density, the need for more services, for example, would the current firefighting equipment be adequate? Increased traffic congestion, and a change in the very nature of the area. High-rise development has no place in a suburban setting unless the citizens of Percipony want their township urbanized in the future. Which brings us to planning, or the lack of it. One thing that this area seems to have suffered from is the inconsistent application of planning principles in its development. While there have been master plans in the past, and a new one is being developed at the present time, it seemed that there had been many exceptions based on the supposed special needs of property owners. This has often resulted in planning by exception rather than by maintaining a consistent regard for the big picture. The currently proposed plans for the property at 272 Percipony Road are a good example of this. Creating a new zoning area for a property that has been declared in need of rehabilitation, and then proposing that it would be in the best interests of the citizens of Percipony in general, and the homeowners around Percipony Road in particular, to erect a six-story building contradicts the whole concept of planning. I know the proposal is for five stories plus a parking garage, which equals six stories for everyone but the zoning planners. How have the citizens been involved in this proposal? What is to stop other developers from pursuing an area in need of rehabilitation designation for their property if they have been unable to profit from its present configuration? By the way, the current building on the site doesn't appear to be in need of rehabilitation. We walked around, it looks pretty nice. How is a rehabilitation process different from spot zoning, which has been shown to generally defeat the planning process? If high-rise buildings aren't Percipony's future, why haven't citizens been involved in the planning process? Is there mention of this type of development in the new master plan? I hope that council members will consider these concerns when reviewing plans for 272 Percipony Road, and when considering other requests for designation of rehabilitation areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Frank Juliana. I live at 33 Glenwood Avenue in Lake Hiawatha. Compared to the other people that are up here, I have a very simple problem. I have no written agenda. I simply have a tree that I'm trying to get taken down in my front yard. It is hanging over my driveway, dropping branches onto my cars. Once a week, me and my wife fill up an entire green landscaper garbage can filled with branches that fall off this tree. We've been trying to get this tree taken down for three years now. We have called Parks and Forestry three years. They came, they removed roots from our front yard. My wife called and left a message for Jim Walsh. He never returned her call. I then called the mayor's action line. I spoke to Michelle last week. She said she will look into it. I called her back. She said Jim Walsh absolutely refuses to take this tree down. I then called Jim Walsh, explained the situation to him, what was going on, that I've had two landscapers come, that they told me, don't even bother doing anything with the dirt that's in your front yard, because we can't grow any grass, because, you know, until you get this tree taken down. And he told me, there's nothing wrong with that tree. I am not taking it down. So I'm here tonight because I really have nowhere else to turn with this. I mean, we're not tree haters. We back up to Knollwood School. We have the woods in our backyard. We have thousands of trees. We told them, take it down, put in another tree. That's fine. But this tree is ruining our front lawn, where we cannot landscape to try and improve our property, and it's dropping branches on all of our cars and all over our driveway every week. And I told Jim Walsh outright, I said, let me tell you, I said, you guys took a tree down for us when we expanded our driveway a couple of years ago. I said, when we, and we talked about this tree, and someone in your office said, well, if you want to take it down, you go right ahead. To which I said, I'm not taking it down. It's a town tree. I'm looking at, I'm looking at, fine. So Jim goes, well, that person's here. Let me ask them. Did you tell Mr. Juliana he could take down? Then the person goes, no. I said, well, what did you expect this person to say to you? Yes, he said it. So at this point, I bring it forward to council because I have nowhere else to turn with this issue.
What's your address?
It's 33 Glenwood Avenue.
Frank, I did speak, I did speak to Jimmy Walsh regards to your tree. I went down by and I looked at it, and it does appear to be a very healthy tree. I think the best we could do is trim it, because the last thing we want to do, start taking trees down for residents, because in the past, Frank, what I had to do, a woman wants to take a tree down, I had to tell her no, because we'll get into the service of taking trees down that are actually healthy, just to make it more convenient. We can't get into that process of doing that.
That, that.
It sets a real bad precedence, and then we'd be cutting trees down.
I understand that, but, I mean, and you know, I know you drove by and, the first branches on the tree are like 20 feet up, because they've trimmed it up so much. I mean, it's literally like a bush on the top of a tree, and that's it. There's nothing beautiful about this tree. I mean, I have dirt around it. I cannot grow any grass there. I mean, I have literally almost a sinkhole in my front yard from where they took the roots and everything out. I want to get dirt, you know, have that filled in, have sod put down. I've spoken to two local landscapers in town, I'm sure everybody's familiar with, and they've both told me the same thing, and told, if you could put sod down, but unless this tree's gone, it's all going to die. I mean, I'm just trying to beautify my home. I'm not trying to, you know, make a big deal. It's a tree. But it's a tree that's causing a problem for me. And again, you know, it's not, like, it's in, on the side of my house, it's directly in front of my house, directly on the corner of my driveway. So not only is it causing a problem in my front yard, but it's causing a problem where, you know, any car that parks there in the morning, you literally have to go out and pick up the branches off of the top of the car.
Well, the best, what I could do tomorrow is I'll speak with Jimmy Walsh in regards to it. I'll have, I'll come down with him. I, you know, I was a driver when I looked at the tree, you know, but it did appear to be healthy, and we'll see what kind of resolution we can have. But I don't want the town to get into a situation where any resident can come and ask us to cut a tree down.
And I understand that.
And Frank, this, you understand, from my point of view, that could be one, number one, very expensive. And if someone wanted the tree cut down because they just don't like the tree there, you know, and it's a town tree, we can't, can't get into that habit.
If it was, if it was a matter of that, I totally understand it. But, I mean, this is a street where my mother-in-law lives five doors down. My wife grew up her entire life on the street, went to Knollwood School, lived on Glenwood Avenue. I mean, we have, you know, the utmost respect for the street and the way it looks, and all we're trying to do is beautify it more, and we can't because of this problem. I mean, you know, we're not looking for something ridiculous. We're just looking for someone to remove the tree so we can beautify our house, put a smaller tree in. Like I said, we don't care about the fact that there's a tree there. It's the other problems that it's causing for us.
All right. Well, I guess then, I'll come down with Jimmy tomorrow. And you going to be home?
I won't be if.
All right. Well, I'll come down with him. I mean, I'll ask him, we'll both.
That's fine. I mean, I don't know what your schedule, my wife is on my Fridays, if you'd like to come Friday.
I'll come Friday then.
She'll be more than happy. I mean, to the fact that we, it's to the point where we've actually saved the branches so that.
If the branches are coming down in your car, I do want to remove, I want to remove which parts are fallen. I will agree with you on that. But I'll come down Friday. If your wife's available, I'll bring Jimmy with me.
Yeah, I'll make sure that she is available.
Just call Michelle tomorrow morning, and we'll set it up.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Who cares? It wouldn't be a council meeting unless you got up here, Patty.
I get up and walk out. I pause, I got to go hand the mayor's trophy out to one of the two high schools.
No problem.
Yeah, right, Smithfield.
Pappy, touch of 182 Hawkins Avenue, don't leave yet, ma'am. These are your questions.
I'm sorry.
Okay. First of all, I just want to know, whatever happened to the sewer tax stuff you were working on? I know it was with the attorney at one point.
But we're going to, actually, that's what I'm going to put on the agenda for next week. The problem we have with the sewer tax, it's actually the maintenance portion of the sewer that you might be possibly be able to write off, not the user portion. The IRS code, and I think it's IRS code 164, colon, whatever, it's pretty complicated. What I want to do is see if the IRS will give us written notification that you can write that portion off, because then it would be tax deductible. But I won't do it until the IRS gives us the okay, because the last thing I would want to do is tell the residents, you can write off that portion, and the IRS disagrees. So, but I'm going to continue to try. Listen, I'm going to keep plugging away. If I can do it, I can do it. If not, at least I tried.
Okay. And one other thing. At the school budget meeting, Mr. Van Cuso and Dr. Seitz had said that they had talked over the water and sewer with the mayor, and that they were told that they would have a, from what I'm understanding, and this is why I wanted to verify, that they have a flat rate that won't change.
Well, that's not what this discussion I have with them. I'm going to talk to maybe the water department. The discussion that we had was basically the, you know, the fees, and I said, the fee's the fee. I said, I can't, you know. But I never lowered the, myself personally, never lowered, I never. The IRS code, and I think it's IRS code 164, cone, whatever, it's pretty complicated. What I want to do is see if the IRS will give us written notification that you can write that portion off because then it would be tax deductible. But I won't do it until the IRS gives us the okay because the last thing I would want to do is tell the residents, you can write off that portion and the IRS disagrees. So, but I'm going to continue to try. Listen, I'm going to keep plugging away. If I can, if I can do it, I can do it. If not, at least I tried.
Okay, and one other thing. At the school budget meeting, Mr. Manqueso and Dr. Seitz had said that they had talked over the water and sewer with the mayor and that they were told that they would have a, for more understanding, and this is why I wanted to verify, that they have a flat rate that won't change.
Well, that's not what this discussion I had with them. I'm going to talk to maybe the water department. The discussion that we had was basically the, you know, the fees, and I said, the fee's the fee. I said, I can't, you know, and I never lowered the, myself personally, never lowered, I never made a flat fee. But I will see if somebody did.
Yeah, because it was very strange the way he was explaining it. He said, they have, it's a flat, flat rate.
Right.
Flat rate. Okay.
Because rates fluctuate in seasons.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if it's different for schools and office buildings. Is it or is it the same as?
No, I can't give you that answer, Pat. I don't want to say yes and it's not.
Oh, okay. You're not sure? Okay. Yeah, because when they said that, I was trying to figure out, you know, how they've been given a flat rate and then if that is a flat rate and we end up with problems.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly. They use more water, I mean.
Yeah. All right.
I agree. Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
I just had a couple of questions that came up during the meeting that I was hoping you could offer clarification on. The first is in relation to the solar panel project that you just voted to approve today. How does that project compare with the project from 2007? What's the differences in terms of the size, the amount of energy? Do you have any idea?
I don't have those answers. Jasmine might have those answers. She's got a cold. She's coughing and she's going to give me a call now.
There are two solar arrays that we're talking about. One is at the community center and that is 30 kilowatts. It's a small project. And then the second one is at the library and that is larger because not only does that include a roof-mounted array, but it also includes canopies in the parking lot. But they're much smaller than, than the solar project that was supposed to go, that we were, had been proposing for Sharky's. The Sharky's project was, I believe, 600 kilowatts.
And for these ones, are these all projects that Persipney would own as opposed to something that's built and then like leased to us through another vendor?
The, the library is, is installed by a private developer who owns the solar array, sells electricity back to the library at a cheaper rate. And, and then gets the tax benefits, the, sells the.
S-R-X.
The S-R-X and, yeah.
The community center is out just to like run the lights near the tennis courts? Is that?
The community center actually is a pretty significant user of electricity just because the, you know, the hours are long between the tennis facility and the community center. We do use a lot of electricity and that's, that's, it won't even generate enough for the.
The building.
The building, yeah. It'll, it'll reduce the demand from, from the grid, but.
And that's one that we're going to own?
Yes, well, and that's.
Is it like 26,000, 26,000 or something that we're paying for, for that solar panel?
That's, that is for the consultant.
Oh, just for the consultant?
Yes.
But there, like if there's any capital cost to install the 30 kilowatts, that's above and beyond that 26.
Yes. The estimated project for the solar project itself is 120 to 140,000 dollars and that's funded through the energy block grant.
Right. Okay. Thank you. The other question I had, and I'm not sure who would know this, in terms of the Brookside tax agreement, how much, since they haven't been paying any taxes to the township for a long time, what is, what's the impact going to be on the senior center? Is, like how much is that a year that they're now having to pay?
Boy, my recollection of the numbers, I don't recall exactly what the numbers are.
144, John, 144.
Is what they were paying, on the payment in lieu.
144,000 for the year?
I think the taxes would have been 300.
My recollection was 256.
Yeah.
But they're, you know, when they, when they pay off their, their mortgage, they're, they're going to be in a very strong position, I think, financially and.
It's not going to be any sort of hardship on the senior center like?
No, no, no. There's not going to be any hardship on the senior center. They're going to be, from what has been represented to us, they're going to be very, very well off because they're, you know, they're not going to have a mortgage payment anymore. And I think those payments were.
Pretty hefty.
Pretty, pretty hefty, so they save all of that. So no, they're, they're actually going to be in a much better position financially. And as I indicated, we really had come to an agreement with them on numbers that, that made sense for both sides and we were, I think, looking forward to finalizing and consummating that transaction. But I, I had been concerned from the beginning about the township's legal ability to provide them with a, with tax-exempt status.
So the 144 is what they're, they had been paying, which is like a reduced rate? And the 256 is what they'll be in paying once their mortgage is paid, which is what? Like later this year or next year?
Sometime, sometime next year, but their, I mean, their mortgage payment is far in excess of the gap.
Okay.
So they're, they're actually, they're, they're going to be much better off financially. But, you know, I didn't want there to be any misunderstanding and confusion as to why we weren't able to consummate the transaction that we wanted to. It's because the state doesn't give us the ability to do it under the law.
Okay. I just have one other question. It's in regards to the closed session also. You talked about doing, waiving, I think I wrote this down right, waiving the attorney-client privilege in relation to Mossberg case. Like what is that about? What is that, what is the closed session about?
Essentially, what it's about, the topic is fair game. It's certainly no secret that Mr. Mossberg, who was a, I guess, a resident and developer in town, has been charged criminally by the United States Attorney's Office for various crimes. My understanding is, is that that is progressing towards trial.
Okay.
And that the U.S. Attorney's Office would like to interview former attorneys of the township.
Oh, I see.
Under the attorney-client privilege, those attorneys are not able to cooperate or to provide any answered questions by the U.S. Attorney's Office because under attorney-client privilege, and there are some exceptions, but generally speaking, any communication from the client to the attorney, the attorney's not, is duty-bound not to be able to disclose. So the issue will be whether or not the council wants to authorize a waiver of the attorney-client privilege.
And to allow current township employees to be.
Which would then permit former counsel.
Oh, former, okay.
It has to be an attorney in order for attorney-client privilege to be invoked. It would, it would enable former counsel to be able to answer questions posed to them, whatever those questions may be, I don't know, by the U.S. Attorney's Office without, you know, them being inhibited from answering them because of the privilege.
Okay. Got it. Do I have any more time? Can I ask?
Time's up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Roy, you awake?
Yeah.
All right, see you when no one rise, I close the public portion. Judy, you want to, we're going to go into closed session.
I'm going to read the closed session resolution.
Please.
Whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas a council is opinion that such circumstances presently exist, whereas a council wishes to discuss litigation and attorney-client privilege issues, and whereas minutes will be kept. And once the matter involving confidentiality above no longer requires confidentiality, minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the township council that the public be excluded from this meeting. I need a motion in a second, please.
So, move. Second.
Mr. Cesaro.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Council President Fox.
Yes.
Will now go into closed session.
Good night, everyone.
And then we'll be opening up.
Horror relieved, good night.
I'm going to turn this over to.
Can you just indicate the time? We're back in open session, council.
9:25. 9:25. Going to turn this portion of the meeting over to our attorney who's going to explain what we were just talking about.
Okay.
Thanks.
As many of you know, Mr. Mossberg has been indicted and is awaiting trial for criminal charges filed by the United States Attorney's Office. And in connection with that case, the U.S. Attorney's Office is seeking to interview prior counsel for the township at the Dakota's Law Firm, Judy Verone and other lawyers of the law firm who worked on matters for the township, not because the Dakota's firm or anyone at the Dakota's firm is implicated in any wrongdoing in any way, that's not the case, but because for reasons that, you know, I don't know, apparently federal prosecutors feel that, that by virtue of their position as township attorneys, that they may have information that may assist the federal authorities in their prosecution of defendant Mr. Mossberg. Under the attorney-client privilege, the Dakota's Law Firm and the lawyers there are constrained in terms of their ability to answer questions by the federal prosecutors. And in that regard, I have discussed with Al Dakota's, the prospect of the town council waiving attorney-client privilege, which would enable or free up lawyers at the Dakota's firm to speak freely and answer questions comprehensively and without the constraints of attorney-client privilege, which would ostensibly assist the federal prosecutors in, in their investigation. I have advised, you know, the township council that under these circumstances, I don't see any reason not to waive the privilege. It is their privilege to waive and they are the only ones who can waive it.
And we're going to waive it and John's going to do a resolution.
And so the motion would be to waive attorney-client privilege as it relates to the Dakota's firm so that they may speak freely and unconstrained by attorney-client privilege with federal prosecutors in connection with the Mossberg case.
So just need, we just need a motion in a second. We can have a real call on that motion.
Wait, you second in a.
You need a motion in a second.
Motion.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Just going to call the roll in a second. On that motion, Mr. Cesaro.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Council President Fox.
Yes.
And now we just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Just one more thing. When the, this case is adjudicated and the former planning board attorney is sentenced, that's when we're hopeful that we are going to be able to recoup some financial monies that we've paid him. And of course, it's going to all be up to that federal judge, but I just want to give a little update on it, that it's not going to occur until the former planning board attorney is sentenced. A motion to adjourn?
That was by Mr. Cesaro in a second. It's by.
Liddy.
Mr. Cesaro.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Council President Fox.
Yes.
And the time, Council President for the record.
Time, 8:29. I'm sorry, 9:29.
Thank you.
It's 8:29 in Hiawatha.